All right, good. Let us begin our Maui Planning Commission's South Maui Community Plan Meeting of Tuesday, August 13, 2024. Mr. Diaz, roll call, please. Roll call.
Again.
Yes.
Okay, roll call. Commissioner Aloha?
Here, at home, by myself, for now.
Thank you, Commissioner Rico.
Aloha, I'm at my former office in the Pele, along.
Commissioner Hipolito?
Hello, here in my office in Kahalua, along.
Commissioner.
Hello, my god, cool, nice to see you here today. Can you hear me? Fine?
Commissioner Thompson?
Aloha, good evening, I'm here at Kahana, at home.
Chair Thayer.
Present, I am here, thank you. So, moving on to item B1, unfinished business. Our review of the South Maui Community Plan. We are looking at Section 2, the policy framework. And we have a presentation from the Planning Department that we will hear first. We can have clarifying questions from the commissioners after that, and then we will go into public testimony. Aloha, we know our Chair Thayer and Maui Planning Commission members. This presentation is intended to give an overview of the purpose and framework of the Maui County General Plan. Discuss how the general plan is a guide and how it is regulatory. And give more explanation of the structure and purpose of the South Maui Community Plan. Maui County Code 2.80B establishes the framework of the general plan and the process for updating it. Maui County General Plan refers to a series of plans that provide direction for the future growth and policy creation in the county. Like Shrek, it has layers. The top layer is the countywide policy plan, which covers the entire county of Maui. Maui County General Plan refers to a series of plans that provide direction for the future growth and policy creation in the county. The top layer is the countywide policy plan, which covers the entire county of Maui. The next layer are the island plans. The community plans for Maui come under the Maui Island Plan. The countywide policy plan includes a vision, core principles, and countywide policies. It is an umbrella policy document that provides direction for the entire county. The countywide policy plan was comprehensively updated and adopted in 2010 with an update in 2021 to advocate for the mitigation of climate change and work towards resilience. The values policies in the countywide policy plan are implemented and refined in the island plans and community plans. The next layer is the Maui County Plan. First adopted in 2012, it provides policy direction for land use, infrastructure improvements, economic development, housing, and protection of natural and cultural resources on Maui. It takes into account interregional issues that span across community plan area boundaries and the island-wide directed growth strategy. Finally, the community plans. The community plans refine and in some ways implement the countywide policy plan and Maui Island Plan. The community plans reflect the unique characteristics of each community plan area and enable residents within those areas to address specific challenges and opportunities. The community plans are focused on directing future land use and the character of development and community design. This unit shows the land use layers from general to specific. The state land use districts are the broadest, establishing large areas where growth is permitted and large areas where conservation or agriculture use are anticipated. The first lucky layer is the Maui Island Plan, growth boundaries. The Maui Island Plan growth boundaries establish the location and type of future development within the state land use districts. The community plan designations provide more specificity about the placement and character of future growth. How to grow within the Maui Island Plan growth boundaries. Each layer is meant to further refine the previous layer, but should not conflict with the previous layer. Finally, zoning districts. Zoning is a tool for implementing the community plan and direction as to what is possible on an individual parcel. Zoning is out on 19 of Maui County Code. Finally, is the general plan, including community plans, a guide or is it law? The answer is yes. There are specific processes where the community plan has regulatory function, others that provide policy guidance. Section 2.80B.010 Maui County Code relating to the general plan and community plans says, "This chapter is designed to provide plans that clearly identify provisions that are meant to be policy guidelines and provisions that are intended to have the force and effect of law." When is the community plan regulatory? In the special management area, when changes in zoning and county's special use permits are sought, subdivisions, and the county budget and capital improvement program. Special management areas. Section 2.5A-26 of the Hawaii Revised Statutes relating to the special management area guidelines state, "No development shall be approved unless the authority has first found that the development is consistent with the Maui County General Plan and zoning." This is repeated in the SMA rules for the three planning commissions. These images are-
State GIS layer for the special management area and show where the SMA is for the entire island of Maui, with the area of North Kihei highlighted in the second clip. So, changes in zoning, according to Section 19.510040A for the Maui County Code relating to application procedures for changes in zoning, the county council may grant a change of zoning if all the following criteria are met. A proposed request meets the intent of the general plan and the objection objectives and policies of the community plans of the county, and the proposed request is consistent with the applicable community plan land use map of the county. These images show the current zoning for North Kihei and the draft community plan map, which would support a change in zoning for the Malka-North Kihei area. When is the community plan, okay, county's special use permits? Section, I'm not going to read that super long. A, compliance is required. A special use permit shall comply with the provisions of this section and the policies and objectives of the general plan and community plans of the county, the Hawaii Revised Statute, and the revised charter of the county. New criteria for a permit, subject to the provisions of this chapter, the appropriate planning commission shall review and after a public hearing may approve a request for special use if the commission finds that each of the following criteria have been met. The proposed request meets the intent of the general plan and objectives and policies of the applicable community plan of the county, and the proposed request is consistent with the applicable community plan land use map of the county. These images show a clip of the existing Kihei-Makinnah community plan with the location of a special use permit in Kihei highlighted. This is a construction material recycling business located in the Agriculture District. And for subdivisions. This is Title 18 of the Maui County Code. The title shall be applied and administered within the framework of the county general plan, community plans, land use ordinances, and Maui County Code and other laws relating to the use of land. The director shall determine whether a proposed subdivision is consistent with the county general plan, community plans, state land use classification, zoning and zoning after consultation with the planning director. This is a subdivision in North Kihei and how it is shown on the draft community plan map. You can see that the yellow area, which is residential designation, is consistent with the concept plan showing homes in the same area. And the capital improvement program. The preparation of county budgets and capital improvement programs shall implement the general plan to the extent practical. The image above shows the CIP project sheet from the mayor's budget for 2025. The highlighted area shows the countywide policy plan priorities being supported by the CIP project. This project is also an action in the draft South Maui Community Plan. When is the community plan specifically not regulatory? And that is with ministerial permits. So, except for ministerial permits or approvals including, but not limited to, building permits, grading permits, funding permits, and electrical permits. All community plan zoning ordinances and subdivision ordinances shall conform to the general plan. Which brings us to the draft South Maui Community Plan. In August of 2022, the department draft of the South Maui Community Plan was released, and in November of 2023, the South Maui Community Plan Advisory Committee completed their review. The format of the updated draft plan is quite different from the 1998 plan. That 1998 plan is divided into topics such as land use, environment, economy, and housing, and very little is said about the connections between these topics. A deliberate choice was made to structure the updated draft plan to address the interconnection of the issues and potential strategies, emphasizing the interconnectedness of land use and and natural and human-made systems, structures, and services that are vital to consider when planning for the future. Okay, so Section 1 of the plan frame is plan framework, which provides an important background information, explores key challenges, and most importantly contains the South Maui Community Plan vision and the five goals. This section has already been discussed by the Maui Planning Commission, so we will not be exploring it in depth. But we will reiterate the draft South Maui, the importance of the draft South Maui vision statement, which provides a guiding light for the community and the county. A vision was written with the community during the engagement phase and confirmed with minor tweaks by the CPAC. As you're reviewing the plan, it is good to be grounded with the vision for the future of the draft South Maui Community Plan vision. Okay, so Section 2 is the policy framework. The policy framework is arranged by the five goals identified in Section 1. A completely balanced, efficient, and connected transportation network, safe, healthy, livable communities for all, ready and resilient systems, Malka-to-Makai watershed management, and responsible stewardship of Wahi Kapuna and historic properties. The purpose of this is to show the interconnection and relationship between planning principles and land uses. These images show how policies may guide development by encouraging pedestrian infrastructure, mixed-use development, or density or open space preserves. The growth framework is the heart of the community plan. It contains the community plan designations, which we will discuss in greater detail before your commissioner reviews Section 3. The key part of the growth framework is the community plan map, which maps areas for future growth using the community plan designations. The community plan map provides ample area to accommodate projected growth. Anticipate covering land use starting at the end of August. The growth framework also contains descriptions of areas of change and areas of stability. Areas of change are areas identified for growth and development in the community plan. For example, the CPAC recommended using the Honu'au'ula District Phase 2 Development Map as approved by the Maui Planning Commission to guide the community plan map for the area. You probably noticed that some undeveloped areas within the Maui Island Plan urban growth boundaries are designated for growth, while other areas remain designated open space, as shown in Honu'au'ula. Areas within the growth boundaries may be designated agriculture, open space. The areas outside the Maui Island Plan growth boundaries should not be designated for growth. Areas of stability are areas expected to remain as they are, including open space and agriculture areas, as illustrated by Figure 3.18 of Ahiri-Kinau. The final meaty section is Section 4, implementation and monitoring, and it contains the actions to be implemented by the county over the 20-year life of the plan. It's a to-do list of actionable items for the county departments to help achieve the community plan's vision and goals. The purpose of this section is to implement and enforce plans through prioritization and accountability. You may notice on this slide that the second action has two numbers, one of which is red and has been crossed out. The original numbers for both policies and actions from the planning department draft were included for easier reference during review. These images show physical manifestations of county funding, two priorities identified in the Maui County General Plan. There are multimodal transportation improvements, including bikes, buses, bus stops, and roadway improvements. There are parks and community facility improvements, including doom restoration, parks facilities, and a new recreation facility in South Maui. There are eight appendices, including two proposed by the Community Plan Advisory Committee. The appendices are mainly reference materials for the body of the plan. Okay, I share this slide again because it is a simple, easy reference for remembering what the different elements of a plan do. Community plans reflect the unique characteristics of each community plan area and enable residents within those areas to address specific challenges and opportunities. Policies guide plans for development and are used to review subdivisions and developments in the special management area and may be used to support special use permits and changes in zoning. Maps show where and what type of growth the community supports within the Maui Island Plan growth boundaries with more specific community plan designations. Developments in the SMA and new subdivisions must align with the community plan maps. The community plan maps are the primary tool in the community plan used to support changes in zoning. Actions tell the county departments what projects and plans to prioritize when it comes to the county budget and staff time. This slide got really messed up. You guys have the, I don't know what happened there. In your addition, there's a policy or action decision tree that should guide whether it belongs in the plan at all and whether it is a policy or an action. Oh? Yeah, there it is, all together. Someone added some nice pupil things for me. How beautiful, mahalo for your time.
Thank you for putting that together for us. Commissioners, do you have any follow-up questions for Ms. Comport? Hearing no questions, we'll go on to public testimony.
Hello, this is Ignacio Filippini, Planner Filippini. We have three in-person testifiers, and right now we have seven online testifiers signed up. Okay, so we'll start with the in-person testifiers.
Okay, in-person list, we have Brandy Corpuz, followed by Johann Law and Eileen Lilly. Okay. Okay. Okay, so Brandy Corpuz, followed by Johann Law, and then we'll go online.
Hello, everyone. Can we hear this one? It sounds really loud. I can see, I can talk alone.
It is on, it's just not traded, checking in.
Hello?
It's coming through here.
Hello? I have to talk really, really loud. Oh, I can't move this. Okay. Is it okay? Aloha, my name is Brandy Corpuz, and I am testifying today to make sure that our community plan continues to be our plan, not a new plan for more luxury development. I am a community advocate, and I have been involved with the South Maui Community Plan for over two years. I want to ask a question to our planning department during this planning process. I asked, how do we assure that we put, that what we put in our community plan actually happens? I was told that it was all about the words that we use to assure that no one can go around them. There are strong words in our current community plan that this commission is about to hear, and it has been suggested that the strong words be softened or deleted. Words like require and prohibit are in there for a reason. I would like for you all to keep in mind that this was a very long planning process, and our CPAC members and community thought long and hard to put the words that are in our community plan currently. If it says require or prohibit, that is the words that we intended to use. Words have greater meaning when you're trying to protect the last remaining wetlands and natural infrastructure or trying to create housing or have housing for your community. We need strong words so that those who choose to ignore the facts will hear us loud and clear. We don't want or need any more development until all of our people are housed. We don't need any more developments until we have proper infrastructure. We need our plan to be about us. Please consider the following. 2.13, 2.1.3, improve roads for Makinnah, Alanui and Makinnah Road for Makinnah Development. Also, 2.1.5 also refers to Makinnah Development, quotes, in quotes. Why are we talking about preparations for luxury developments when we need housing for our community members across Maui Island? I don't approve of any tax-paid roads or resources for any development until our people's housing needs are met. 2.1.14, leave require the completion of North-South Collector Road. 2.1.16, support the integration of wetlands and drainage ways with greenways and multi-use paths in and around the Lapua Business District with priority given to the health and protection of the wetlands. 2.2.17, leave require all developments to have pedestrian-oriented infrastructure. 2.2.19, leave require workforce housing to be spread out equitably because our community members should be in all parts of South Maui. 2.1, 2.2.20- Can you summarize, please? Yes. 2.2.21, 2.2.27, 2.2.28, 2.2.40, 2.2.47, 2.3.14, 2.4.7, 2.4.8, 2.14, and 2.58 all need to be, need to have the same strong words that they were created by our community vision plan. For those of us who were in the process, we thank you for looking over this, but we would like for it to remain what we intended it to be. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Any questions from the commission? Seeing none, thank you for your testimony. Next is Johann Law. And then we will go online to Mike Moran, Lucian Dine, and John Lainey.
Okay, Johann Law, testifying on behalf of myself. Policy 2.5.11B. When Wahi Kapuna or other historic properties are located adjacent to a project area within the parcels, do we be developed, requiring mitigation of potential adverse impacts? I think the specification of within the same parcel should be removed. I think that impacts to adjacent parcels or state property, things like that, should also be considered, and a specific example is that in Palauia, there is a hayao. It's part of the Office of Hawaiian Affairs Preservation Area. That was part of a Everett Dowling project. And next to it is a large mansion that is much higher than that hayao, and it towers, looms over it. And so, it's not just physical damage to cultural resources that has to be protected against, but also things like buches and just the physical presence, stuff like that. You know, there are also burials in Palauia, and I mean, I think we all know there are burials everywhere, and there can be damage through construction activities, not necessarily on the same parcel. You know, so I think this piece of this particular policy should just be removed and should just be required mitigation of potential adverse impacts, so. Mahalo.
Thank you. Any questions for the testifier? Seeing none, thank you. Okay, next we go online to Mike Moran, followed by Lucian Dine, John Lainey, and Lynn Peabody.
Okay, Aloha, Chair Thayer, and volunteer commissioners. Thank you for your perseverance. You guys went through all day, all night meetings to these now double-shift meetings, and now the technology issues. So, I always commend the volunteers, but especially this crew for what you've been going through. Enough about you, about me. I want to impress that I participated in everything for this meeting. I went to all the outreach meetings. I was a member of the alaki, and I attended every meeting as a CPAC member, from start to finish, every single meeting. So, I'm pretty aware of what the situation was. And apparently, what your first live testifier said, this was a question that came up over and over again at all these. How can we make this stronger? Use strong language, that's what you do. The vast majority of the time, the vast majority of the CPAC members agree to this. Every time an issue came up, we didn't agree on everything by any means, but when it came to being a language, yes, it was stated over and over. We want it to be required. We don't want suggestions or encouragements because that's what happened with our original plan and our original 1998 plan, that it wasn't strong enough. So, there was work around, there was ways to get around it.
Sounds good.
I can just repeat that over and over again, that that's what we heard when we asked planning, members of the long-range planning at the outreach meetings, and we asked at the alaki meetings, and we stated over and over again, strong language.
One minute.
We only have, I only have three minutes, and I'm just addressing several items in policy, 2.2, 17, 19, 27, 40, and 47. So, 17, 19, 27, 40, and 47, and 2.2. You see repeatedly, it's going backwards. Okay, now let's take out those strong language terms and put in these suggestions. Let's make it weaker. No, we don't want it, we want strong, we want specific language. That's what our community said. This group was made up of South Island members in the first group. Testifiers came in, this was repeatedly said. So, honestly, it's frustrating to see this trying to go backwards at this point. So, please do not let that happen. Please keep our language in place. And I, I stopped, thank you very much.
Thank you for your testimony. Commissioners, any questions for the testifier? Seeing none, thank you again.
Here we go.
Next up is Lucian Dine, followed by John Lainey, Lynn Peabody, and Harry Lake. Lucian Dine, are you there?
Aloha, am I unmuted?
Yes, please go ahead.
Okay, thank you. My name is Lucian Dine. I'm testifying- I'm testifying on my own behalf. I served on the General Plan Advisory Committee that put together the Maui Island Plan, spent three years doing the, the big view that these community plans are supposed to now provide the close up view of. And I have followed the South Maui Community Plan through its iterations when it was being reviewed by the CPAC. I have to say that I really think that those who are writing to you helpfully to, to change language from things like require and prohibit and shall to encourage are not leading you in the direction that the people of South Maui want to go. The people of South Maui had 13 representatives on the CPAC. You have none. And so I hope you will ignore most of this language. It's a bit disingenuous. It's sad that there's threats included of litigations and things not being in compliance with various parts of the county code or our state laws. I, I think people need to step back, having served on one of these bodies. What you learn is that you can put language that would actually improve things in a community plan as a, as a citizen who is reviewing it as a citizen body. And you can suggest that if it doesn't conform with our local, with our current statutes, that they be amended to support greater protection and greater scrutiny. Because people are just kind of fed up with what gets through the cracks these days. And they want clear language. And so please go for the clearest language. Don't be afraid of prohibit. Don't be afraid of require. Encourage hardly ever does anything. It's, it's a perfectly useful term for certain things where there is no county authority. It is in our current community plan and it's being used to refer to many things that the county has absolutely no authority over. Encourage more daycare centers to be established. Well, of course, that's a perfect use of encourage. And that's, you know, that's where it should be found. But when it comes down to actual, physical planning parameters, we should have require and prohibit for the things that the county has authority over. So please stand behind the people of South Maui and the language that they put forward. The housekeeping amendments suggested by the department, for the most part, make a lot of sense. I do have some problems with some of the language around the affordable housing, but I think I'll need to address that through written comments. But thank you for your deliberation on this. And remember, you have no South Maui representative. Showing respect would be to pass on the language that the South Maui representatives have worked very hard on. Mahalo.
Thank you for your testimony. Any questions from the commission? Commissioner Decos.
Thank you Chair. Thank you, Ms. Dene. Can you clarify, you said, you could always ask for an amendment to clarify. Can you just restate?
Yes, well, for, for instance, there can be a policy adopted, like in the last community plan, there was a policy that the Palaua area would have a minimum of a 20 acre preserve set aside. So that, that wasn't legal at the time. Legally, it was agricultural land and nothing was required there. But when the, the project district went up for zoning and everything, that amendment was, was passed by the county council so that it complied with the community plan. The community plan, after a community plan is passed, there will be a list at the end of it of areas of our existing laws that need to be tweaked in order to support some of the recommendations or various recommendations in the community plan. So when someone tells you, oh my gosh, you can't pass this, our laws already conflict with it, you need to ask yourself, am what I passing actually sound? And if our laws conflict with it, should we amend our laws so that they don't conflict with it and they support the same level and measure of, of review and, and protection for, for our planning process?
Great, thank you, Ms. Dene. Thank you Chair.
Any other questions from the commission? Seeing none, thank you again for your testimony.
Mahalo.
Next is John Laney, followed by Lynn Peabody, Harry Lake and Rob Weltman. Oh shucks, sorry, we can't hear you again. Can the people online hear the testifier?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, yes, we can hear you now.
Okay, very good, thank you. I want to reinforce what most of the testifiers have said, which is the language that was put into the South Maui Community Plan is specific. And a lot of work was done over the year plus of putting this together to make sure.
But it goes, but it's on this.
Strong language like.
Which computer?
And prohibit are intentional. And we really want to encourage you to leave that in because the people of South Maui really need some of these things to happen rather than just to be talked about.
See it.
I'd like to direct your attention to policy 2.1.14. Is about the North-South Collector Road. And there, I think it's a housekeeping policy proposed by the planning department, which is to get rid of it. But the reason that we need it to be a policy as well as an action is that we want the planning department to review it before granting permits to other projects that will impede the implementation of the North-South Collector Road. So for example, the North-South Collector Road's been the work for 20 years and parts of that road have gotten permits where housing has been built on it. And those permits should never have been granted. We need to have it be a policy as well as an action. Then in policy 2.219, they want to change the language to encourage workforce housing units to be spread out equitably rather than require. And again, the, the point is by requiring it to be spread out, we can avoid stuff like lead corps coming in and getting affordable housing credits that don't allow affordable housing in Wailea and it's moved somewhere else. We want the housing to be spread out amongst all of the residential building rather than just in areas where there's high income and low income. So that's it, thank you very much.
Mahalo for your testimony. Any questions from the commission? Commissioner Kialoha.
Mahalo for your testimony, Mr. Laney. There's a lot of feedback coming from, I think it's the commission, I don't know, we can hear somebody talking, so it makes it hard for the test, for us to hear the testifier. Mr. Laney, I got 2. Uh, sorry. I got the last one that you mentioned, 2.2.
2.19.
Yeah, 2.2.19. What is the one that you said before that?
2.1.14, which has to do with the North-South Collector Road, which if you're not familiar is a critical road we're trying to get completed in South Maui so that we have more ingress and egress for the community and for emergency situations.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the commission? Commissioner Decos, are you raising your hand or no? Okay, mahalo again for your testimony. Next up is Lynn Peabody, followed by Harry Lake, Rob Weltman and Robin Knox.
Aloha, can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
Thank you very much. My name is Lynn Peabody and I'm an owner and part-time resident in South Maui. Thank you for this opportunity to provide my testimony with respect to the planning commissioners' review of the South Maui Community Plan. The plan development and the current review reflects significant hours of thoughtful work by many people. It is designed to provide guidance for the next 20 years, not just for a very short period. Therefore, as the commissioners are reviewing the possible changes, I encourage them to understand that there are differences between various communities within Maui and to do their best to make the plan something that will be appropriate specifically for South Maui. I'd like to suggest and talk briefly about section 2.25 of the plan, 2.2.25. And I'd encourage a modification of that section. This is written as a all or none solution for increasing the inventory of long-term housing units within the community. While this may be one approach, it may not be the best or the only solution, especially for the South Maui community. The current language leaves no room for exploring other approaches. This is a 20-year plan. Are there no other alternatives? Please consider revising the wording in this section to quote, identify and encourage feasible options to make long-term housing available, close quote. This wording does not rule out the phase-out approach, but it does allow for other creative options. Mahalo for all your work and for providing the opportunity to hear from others. Thank you.
Mahalo for your testimony. Any questions from the commission? Seeing none, mahalo again.
Thank you.
Next is Harry Lake, followed by Rob Weltman and Robin Knox. And if there's anybody else waiting online or online who wishes to testify, please provide your name in the chat to staff. Now, Mr. Lake, please go ahead.
Hello, Commissioners, thank you for your time. I'll go with Mike Moran, which was, appreciate his time and bearing through the technical difficulties of the day. I'm testifying, Harry Lake, I'm testifying for Pete Lani Promenade, one of the major sites. Specifically, I want to speak to policy 2.1.14.
Sorry, hold on one second. It's, your sound is getting garbled on our end and it's hard to understand you.
Still garbled?
Do you think you could maybe try turning off your video and just have your audio?
Yeah, yeah, let me try that. Is that better?
I think so, yeah. Can we redo his three minutes and start from the beginning?
Thank you, appreciate it. Again, Harry Lake, representing.
Come back on. It's back on, long back on.
Sorry, Mr. Lake, somebody has their mic on somewhere.
Yeah. Okay, good, good. All right, good, thank you. Again, speaking up behalf of Pete Lani Promenade.
Wait, hold on one second. Commissioner Decos says there's feedback coming through from something in our room. Okay, hopefully now it's okay. Sorry, Mr. Lake, restart one more time.
Right on, right on. Again, Harry Lake, speaking on behalf of Pete Lani Promenade and specifically on policy 2.1.9, which speaks to 150-foot setback of Pete Lani Highway. We, we, we're concerned with the requirement, and I think there's a statement that we, I think there was some mention that our, our property reached 150-foot setback, which just is in the case, our original DNO and the original Colono Ulu Industrial Park guidelines actually specifically 30-foot setback. And we're, we're okay with a 40-foot setback, but certainly not 150-foot setback. And furthermore, that original plan was then ratified through simply an order in 2020 that was signed by the state, the county, thoroughly the property owners and, and handfuls of intervenors, some of which I've already spoken to. So let me clarify that, that we, we certainly want precedent. And a Sandra, I think that that would be inconsistent with adjacent properties, thoroughly Chiha Gateway, Tormi at North and even Kenny Oldio Apartments, which is just like I have was just recently developed. So there'd be, we'd be inconsistent with the properties. And then, and then third, I just would put undue burden to the priority of the project. Trying to make something viable, certainly because, sort of comments that was previously made, that infrastructure is really important. We're committed to putting a significant amount of infrastructure on the property and how it serves our, our property, though so much of South Maui, including a relocation of a water pipe. We've already supported the installation of a. One minute. Station. And then our Colono Ulu Upcountry Highway connection, which we've come off of our property, would be a key cornerstone to what hopefully will be a North-South Collector Malka of Pete Lani Highway one day. So we, we appreciate some consideration, giving some flexibility on that. So we'd be consistent with the original approvals that a property is subject to, the LUC, the county and state. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. I'm sorry, a lot of the beginning of what you said was very garbled, especially when you started talking about the 150-foot setback. Is it possible for you to put that in writing and send it to the department?
Yes, yes, I will absolutely do that. I'll, I'll follow up with a written testimony.
Thank you. Otherwise, any questions from the commissioners? Commissioner Lindsay?
For that 150-foot setback, you had a suggestion and then that was a little bit more doable. What was that number?
We're, we're subject to a 30-foot setback right now and we were suggesting 40, which I think was a common number to throw out in early discussions.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from the commission? Singnan, thank you for your testimony. Oh wait, oh sorry, Commissioner Decos.
Not a question for the testifier, but I'm just trying to find the source of the feedback. And the only thing that's unmuted is your guys' room. So I don't, that's the only blue square that I see lights up and that's providing feedback. But just a suggestion, if there's somewhere, some way to mute that, just so I can, okay, thank you Chair. But of course, if it's muted, we can't hear you. So probably just mute when the testifier is talking.
We'll all be super, super quiet in this room when everybody's talking. Oh. Okay, new plan, we will try mute our room during testimony. Next is Rob Weltman, followed by Robin Knox. Next is Rob Welpman, followed by Robin Knox.
My name is Rob Welpman, I'm the Chair of the South Maui Plan Advisory Committee, but speaking on behalf of the Kihei Community Association today. A number of the planning departments' proposed changes to the South Maui Community Plan would weaken it significantly. Of the 48 proposed changes, 16 should be rejected to keep the plan in alignment with the goals of the South Maui community. And there are an additional three where Hawaiian cultural aspirations are modified. It's 2.5.7, 2.5.10, and 2.5.11B. I'm hoping someone from the Hawaiian community will speak on if those changes are acceptable. So, I will only touch on three other policies today. Now, the purpose of policies in the community plan is to provide guidance to the planning department when it makes decisions on permits and other development requests. That is why policy 2.1.14 requires completion of the north-south collector road to ease the congestion on Petalani Highway, take up traffic from South Kihei Road when it is flooded and eventually unusable, and also to provide a second emergency entry and exit to South Maui. In the past, the department effectively eliminated the right-of-way for the section between Kanani Road and Alunui Kealee by granting building permits where that road was intended to go. So, without a policy to protect the north-south collector road, the same thing could happen again with the required segment between Kenneleo Road and North Kihei Road. For 2.2.17, we need strong language to get housing planned to allow easy access to jobs, services, schools, and recreation. The community plan draft does not say that all those things need to be in the same neighborhood as the housing, just that some of each must be close enough to get to by walking, biking, or transit, and not require that all residents have a car for those basic needs. Requiring private vehicles for those things is expensive, leads to congestion and delays, and is not healthy. With 2.2.18, we feel the goal of affordable housing should not be isolated ghettos where everyone has to commute by car to go anywhere at all, but integrated living environments where the residents have access to schools, services, transit, and jobs like the more well-to-do areas have. The community plan and the county government should serve our entire community's needs, not just those, just those of the wealthy. So, I would recommend that the commission reject the proposals of the planning department for policies 2.1.14, 2.2.17, and 2.2.18. Thank you.
Commissioner Kaloha?
Mahalo for your testimony, Mr. Welpman. I just want to clarify, did you say 2.1.14 or 2.2? Can you say those numbers again?
Yeah, the, the three policies that I talked about were 2.1.14, 2.2.17, and 2.2.18.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lindsay? You also mentioned a few that native Hawaiian orcs might be interested in, 2.5.
I, I missed one, unfortunately, I missed one meeting of the CPAC, and that was the meeting where the policies concerning the Hawaiian cultural preservation were discussed. And so, I don't feel like I'm qualified to say whether changes proposed by the planning department are acceptable or not. And I'd really like to see the Hawaiian members of the CPAC or other members of the Hawaiian community comment on those before the planning department's changes are accepted.
So, which numbers are those?
Those were 2.5.7, 2.5.10, and 2.5.11B.
Thank you. Any additional questions from the commission? Singa, thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
Next up is Robin Knox. And she is the last person signed up to testify. Oh, we have one more? Okay. Okay, thank you. And if there's anybody else listening online, we're approaching last call for testimony. So, if you wish to testify, please indicate yourself to staff in the chat. Ms. Knox, please go ahead.
Aloha, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you so much. So, I am testifying. First of all, I want to concur with what previous testifiers said about strong language. I, I don't support the weakening of language that's proposed by the planning department, but I specifically want to testify about policy 2.1.16, which is about wetlands. And the policy says currently, support the integration of wetlands and drainage with greenways and multi-use paths in and around the Lopoa Business District with priority given to the health and protection of the wetlands. So, the planning department's recommendations say that the Lopoa Business District, that that language could apply to both downtown Kihei, formerly known as the Lopoa Business District, and to the Lopoa Business Park, formerly known as Maui Research and Technology Park. So, I'll address that, that statement first. I do not want you to strike out in and around the Lopoa Business District, but I would like for you to add clarifying language to say that that includes downtown Kihei and Lopoa Business Park. And so, the rationale for me asking you for that is that most of the wetlands in Kihei are within the Waialuli Kea Kea Corridor, which includes that Lopoa Business District. So, anything that goes on, even up in the tech park or the business park, whatever you want to call it, does affect those wetlands. It's not just things adjacent to wetlands that affect the wetlands, it's that entire corridor. So, I would like you to leave the, the part in that says in and around Lopoa Business District and to clarify that that does include downtown Kihei and Lopoa Business Park. I concur with the planning department's statement that the policy could benefit areas throughout South Maui, but I, I think you can expand that policy to all of South Maui without removing those references to the Lopoa District. It's particularly important to keep that focus on that Lopoa District because those ponds on Pekaa were created as mitigation for all the development that's already been done. So, you know, and, and they are pretty much the only significant bird habitat in Kihei. So, you know, to, we need to protect those as much as possible. So, leaving the language that includes the tech park, all that area that's currently being developed around the ponds, the entire Lopoa Business District should specifically stay included. And I do support the idea of extending the policy more broadly to all of South Maui.
I'm.
Mahalo for your testimony. Any questions from the commission? I do have one question, Ms. Knox. Regarding the department's intent for this policy to apply to the entirety of South Maui, which would, of course, include both Lopoa areas that you are referring to. I guess, what would be your suggestion to include everything within this policy?
Let me see, you could say, support the integration of wetlands and drainage ways with greenways and multi-use paths throughout South Maui, including Lopoa Business District, inclusive of downtown Kihei and Lopoa Business Park, something to that effect. But specifically calling out that Lopoa corridor because from the business park all the way down to the wetlands does affect those wetlands.
Thank you for your testimony.
You're welcome, aloha.
The last person we have signed up right now is Kaianishiki.
Aloha, Chair, Commission members. Thank you very much for your volunteer service to our community. We really, really appreciate you all. Kaianishiki testifying on my own behalf, although I am a registered aloha ina lobbyist. I am testifying to just offer a little bit of my own personal experience. I did serve on the West Maui Community Plan Advisory Committee as Chair, and the general plan gives kind of like a larger picture, and the community plans are meant to be detailed and specific. And they really speak to the nuances of what a specific community wants in their, in their plan. And so, I don't think that community plans are supposed to just provide these like fuzzy recommendations and guidelines. When we, when we worked on the West Maui Community Plan, we were very deliberate, very thoughtful, and we, like the South Maui Plan, specifically put in strong language to communicate these very detailed and specific things that are important. So, I think that it is important to retain that in order to adequately convey how strongly the community feels about things. And, you know, lawyers who are unhappy with the community plan can always threaten lawsuits. But, you know, you folks have corporation counsel, and, and the community plan should, should reflect and be respected for the voices and the time that was put, put into it. That is, that is something that was echoed time and time again when there were challenges to, you know, what the community said in the West Maui Plan at the Maui Planning Commission. And ultimately, the, the county council adopted what the, what the community's voices said they wanted. And, and we really appreciate that. So, I just ask this body to respect the time that the community members put into this, and never mind these, these threats. They said that about the West Maui Community Plan, and nobody did, nobody has challenged it legally. And I will bring up a slide that was presented by the planning department that goes against what is.
Sorry, you've hit three minutes? Can you summarize here and conclude your testimony, please?
Absolutely. Just to make reference to the slide, that it is not just recommendations and guidelines, and that it is, there is requirements. For instance, SMA requires compliance with the community plan. So, thank you so much, we appreciate it.
Mahalo for your testimony. Any questions from the commission? Singa and Mahalo again. So, that is all of our list of people who've signed up to testify. We're going to do a last call for testimony right now. Is there anybody in the gallery? Oh, okay, we have one person in the gallery. Oh, already? Oh, sorry, one second, I'm told we have to take a recess to fix some technical difficulties because our video of our, oh, are we back?
Well, so.
Switches automatically, that's the problem.
So, in order for us to continue the meeting, it has to be on all of the time. Otherwise, we run the risk of not showing quorum. So, we need to solve this glitch. So, apologize to everyone in the gallery, we've got to take care of this situation. So, mahalo.
So, we will take a 10-minute recess. Please bear with us, see you in 10 minutes, thank you. All right, it is 5:16. We are resuming our Maui Planning Commission meeting of August 13, 2024, regarding the South Maui Community Plan. We are continuing with public testimony. In the gallery, we have signed up David Good, followed by Cal Chipchase. Please go ahead.
Mahalo, Chair, I assume I'm heard, okay? Thank you, Chair, and members of the commission for all your service and a long day. I just want to mention that I was really pleased to see the planning department chime in with comments that are implementable. The original plan that I think that the CPAC started with was largely a community consultation document. The CPAC made a lot of changes and revisions. They looked for guidance often from plan, again, from court counsel. Sometimes they got it, sometimes there wasn't enough time. But now, the department's really had a chance to look at it, and I think with all the divisions chiming in, so whether it's ZIAD in terms of planning and subdivision, current division and SMA implementation, the implementation division, I think now that you've got a dialogue to understand what can work and what can't, and hence the revisions. So, I'm in general support of all the revisions. I'll mention some specifically that I've been following, 2.1.5, 15, and 17 through 28. In 2.3, there's 18, 20, and 26. 2.4.5A and B, I agree with the department's changes, along with the changes that have been suggested by Mr. Chipchase. And then finally, I want to spend just a little bit of time on 2.4.14. This is in regards to the low-impact development standards for stormwater quality. Stormwater quality is administered by the Department of Public Works, my former department. And I talked story with those folks, and they said they had not seen the revisions. And I think that was more not a problem from the planning department reach out. I think it's the fact that the fellow I talked to, he said he gets 250 emails a day, and it's probably in there. So, I sent that to them, they're reviewing it, I've already got some comments back. I, I think I'm just going to tell, talk story with you folks. But, the suggested language that's left conflicts with the department's rules. And the department has, you know, they're engineers, they like my rules, they got 21 pages of rules, and the policy has written conflicts a little bit with that. So, I think some more massaging of that one would be in order. But overall, I think the department acknowledged the hard work that was put in by the CPAC, understands where the words say require and encourage is important to distinguish so that you don't box yourself into situations that will be regretted later. And so, I applaud, I applaud the hard work, thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Questions from the commission? Can you hold on one second? I want to make sure I wrote down the policies that you said, 2.1.15, 15.
17 through 28. And then, there's 2.3, 18, 20, and 26. And then, 2.4, 5A and B, I got a gamut of changes from Chipchase, and then 2.4.14 is the one I elaborated on.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Chair, just quickly, this is Planner Philippine. I just wanted to make sure that the commissioners can hear right now. Commissioner Thompson says he cannot hear. Can the other commissioners hear? Okay.
Did, did you folks?
I'm not sure what's going on over there.
I guess, Vice Chair Thompson, which part could you not hear? Vice Chair Thompson, can you hear us at all?
Needs to unmute.
Oh, you're on mute?
You're unmuted now.
Can you hear me? Thumbs up if you can hear me?
I'm using my computer, it's going to give feedback.
I, I don't think that's going to help.
Yeah.
Because he, if he can't hear it, then everyone else can hear it to him.
It's a tape to him.
No, I just haven't even told him that everyone else can hear. I don't know if that's going to help, so maybe type him a note real quick. So maybe type him a note real quick.
Yeah, everybody can hear except for Vice Chair Thompson unfortunately.
His computers.
Can you type him a note and let him know?
Yeah. Yeah.
Excellent. I think he made the wrong offering, Sid, on D.
Put that to Moscow.
We're communicating by Morse code now.
Okay. Perhaps have him go out and come back in again.
Vice Chair Thompson, can you hear us?
I don't think so. Chair, tell him.
Oh?
Oh, maybe he's doing that himself. He, I think he just likes to-
Say that big recess to deal with this.
And notes still there. He's unmuted too.
Can Comish, Commissioner Lindsay go on?
Yeah, you could go on camera and that would give us five.
Absolutely.
Director, I just, I want to thank everyone who's here and listening. Apologize for all of this. We're doing the best we can. Thank you.
Okay, we have quorum showing on screen. Beautiful. Our last person that I know of who has signed up to testify is Mr. Cal Chipchase.
Thank you Chair, Commissioners. Like Mr. Good, I support the changes that the Planning Department has proposed. I think that they make a lot of sense and we've set that out in my written testimony. In addition to that, I have a few suggestions for some of the other sections. They're set out in my written testimony and I won't go over all of them. I'll only cover a couple of them. One is the policy that Mr. Lake talked about at 2.1.9, dealing with the 150-foot setback MAUCA of the highway. Like Mr. Lake, I looked for any order or agreement that imposed that setback. I couldn't find one. It seems inconsistent with the LUC's DNO. And at the end of it, at the end of the highway, I believe it would impact the Honu'ua'ula project and the Phase 2 site plan that was approved by this Commission. Rather than deal with a conflict between that requirement and an approved site plan by this Commission, I asked that that be modified. Mr. Lake's recommendation, I think, is a good one. The balance of my comments on the rules deal with a couple of different subjects. One is not looking to make it harder to develop affordable housing. And it strikes me that a lot of the ideas are good, but sometimes proposed by folks who haven't developed affordable housing. And so one example of that is at 2.1.12, which deals with encouraging multimodal transportation. That's great, and I fully support those ideas. But in phrasing it in terms of requirements, you may make the difference between a project that can go forward and a project that can't. And so we proposed, in my testimony, a way to make it a little more flexible so that individual projects have an opportunity to come before this Commission. And if specific requirements or changes are good and work for that project, then this Commission or the Council can impose them. Rather than looking 20 years in the future and saying every project must do exactly these things. The same is true at 2.2.26. It's great to do your affordable first. I'll be before you next month on a project where we want to do that. But you can't always do that. And you can't always do it concurrently because often the market housing has to drive the ability to do the affordable. Rather than forcing all projects for 20 years and potentially killing projects that would introduce additional workforce and affordable units, provide flexibility. So that when projects come before you, you can impose a concurrency or a first-up requirement if that works for the project, rather than every project for 20 years. The, the last group, or the other group, is simply follow the law in some ways. Mr. Good talked about one place where there's a conflict. That's kind of an obvious one where there's a, a specific rules dealing with drainage requirements that would conflict with the South Maui Community Plan as phrased. Rather than doing that, ensure that the rules conform to the law. Another example that isn't quite as obvious is at 2.2.35, which deals with shoreline access. It would require shoreline access both laterally-
Please summarize.
You got it. It's my last one, Commissioners. It would require shoreline access laterally and perpendicularly for all projects that come before the Commission. On a law, you can only require access if the project is impacting existing legal access. So rather than build into your rules something that is good and we all want, but may not follow the law, allow some flexibility in the policy that you're adopting. So that when specific projects in the SMA, which will come before the Commission, impact shoreline access, you can require shoreline access in return for approval of the project. Thank you very much.
Mahalo for your testimony. Questions from the Commission? Seeing none, thank you again.
Thank you Chair.
Is there anybody else online or in the gallery who would like to testify? This will be last call. Going once, going twice. Okay, testimony is now closed. Commissioners? Now we have on our agenda, Section 2, the policy framework. Goes 2.1 through 2.5. We have lots and lots of testimony regarding individual policies. So I think it's best for us to go one by one through each of them. And if you have questions or comments on them, please flag them and we will discuss. After, oh, and we also have the department's memo. If you can, and if there's any questions, if anybody has question for the department, or we can go forth into policies in Section 2.1. So first, does anybody have any questions for the department on the memo regarding the suggested changes? Commissioner DeCos? Sorry, we can't hear you now.
He is unmuted.
We were doing so good. As the test, can Commissioner Kailaha, can you try to say something? Oh, can you try to speak? Oh dang, we can't hear you either.
And Mel is also unmuted.
But the closed captioning is catching her.
And they can hear online, they can hear the other people online, online. Other people, they can hear each other. Thank you, that's- I'm already moving.
Is this something you're working on? Is there a solution to this problem?
Okay, I believe Commissioner DeCos was trying to say something. Please, continue.
I gotta remember what it was. I think, I think my question was if there's a policy that states require, and somehow the applicant comes in and they have attempted to meet all the demands or the requirement, and for some reason they cannot, does that automatically dismiss that applicant? I don't know if that's a Corp Counsel, Council question or a Planning Director?
Mr. Hopper, are you still online with us?
Yeah, I'm, I'm here. I mean, I, I would want to see the policy and the actual circumstances. But if you're in a situation where the plan has the force and effect of law, and there's a mandatory policy, it may be that the applicant can't get, for example, an SMA permit or another type of discretionary permit if the language says something along those lines. Now again, I want to reserve judgment for the specific policy and the specific circumstances. But if it applies with the force and effect of law and says require something, and depending on the language, it may say, well, you have to do this or you will not be able to get these types of permits. So that, that's, there's a potential for that in, in, in certain cases.
And is there leeway for an exemption? You know, there's, I, I guess what I'm getting at, you can pick it from two sides. If you encourage, you really, you know, it's like, I mean, we see it all the time. And in Planning Commission, you know, people say, well, that's not required by code. Why are you asking me to do that? So there's not a lot of incentive for an encouragement. So if it's required, they're gonna, at least I assume, attempt to do it. But if they clearly attempt it and they have good reason, they cannot. Is there, is there an ability to provide an exemption? I don't know if that makes sense.
Well, there's, there's a couple of things. One, you, this is, I'm assuming that the community plan applies, applies with the force and effect of law, which it doesn't in all cases. For example, if all you need is a building permit for an item, you generally would not have to comply with community plan policies if all you needed was a building permit. But like I said, if you're, if you're in the special management area and it says require, I mean, some of it may depend on what, what it's required. But if it's not done, then the applicant may have to seek a community plan amendment, which requires an environmental assessment and county council approval prior to being able to, to do, you know, whatever the thing is they want to do. Another option, which I've seen in other plans, is if there's a potential legal issue with something, you could say, to the extent permitted by law, and then, you know, have the, have the item. And so you can review that in each case. But, you know, there could be cases where the decision maker can be, you know, may have to follow a policy and a plan that would potentially have to result in a permit being denied or, you know, requirements being, being made, you know, of the project that can't be met. It's a possibility.
Okay, thank you. Thank you Chair.
Any other things from the Commission for the department or Corp Counsel? Okay, seeing none, are we ready to dive into our policies in Section 2.1? Seeing no objections, we will say yes. So let us know if you have any on the, any comments or questions on these policies as we go through. 2.1.1, 1.2. The department had comments on 1.3. Regarding in new action. Director, would you like to speak to this?
Certainly. So I apologize for missing the first part of this meeting because this was an important aspect of what we were talking about. So I trust that Karen did a great job explaining the difference between a policy and an action. And in our reading of this policy, we felt that it would be more effective as an action. So we're proposing that the Commission remove it from Policy Section and make it into an action so that it can actually do what the community intended, which is improve McKenna Ala'nu'i and McKenna Road to include a continuous bike lane providing cyclists safe access to McKenna State Park. So an action, as an action, it would be done. It would have a lead agency. And we, in the letter, we propose it is a project that would be high priority with short timing. And that it'd be assigned to DPW. We made an estimate on the cost. And then the funding source would be the county.
Thank you for the explanation. Commissioners, Commissioner Kailaha?
So when we put an action in, is the county, like, the county lead agency, DPW, do they have to do this? Like, how, how responsible do they have to be for an action? Are they held accountable to this?
Mahalo for your question, Commissioner. So there are roughly 1,200 actions between all of the community plans and the general plan and the Maui Island Plan right now. Our Plan Implementation Division is responsible for tracking all those. And in a few weeks, maybe a month or so, you're gonna see where the county is and all of those actions are. As you can imagine, with 1,200 actions, it's pretty difficult to get to all of them. But it is much more likely to be implemented as an action than as a policy. Because in order for it to be implemented as a policy, it would have to be part of a condition of our project. I, it can't even, it wouldn't, it doesn't make sense. So it makes way more sense to put it as a policy. I understand your question. And I think, you know, that's something the Commission should be mindful of, is assigning too many actions, putting too many actions in this plan. Because the more we put in the plan, the more difficult it is for all of us to, to accomplish them.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from the Commission? Well, I guess to follow up to the department's suggestion. How does everybody feel about turning this into an action? I see two thumbs up. Commissioner DeCos, Commissioner Hipolito, okay, everybody. Okay, so let us proceed with that change. Now, 2.1.4. The department had comments on 2.1.5, as did many of the testifiers. Director?
Mahalo for this. So we took a look at, as was discussed prior, we took a look very closely at everything in the plan. And our, what we were looking for is community intent and implementation. And this plan is, you know, meant to live for a certain period of time and then be updated. And, but as you can tell, we are quite behind on our updates. We're doing the best we can and trying to get to those. But we wanted it to live, we wanted a policy like this to live longer than something that say, right now it's written as the KIA Subway Transportation Plan. So we wanted it to be specific and, and also be flexible in case there were other transportation plans that came up. And then we also wanted to include the, any projects, traffic analysis or studies associated with the project to just make it really clear that they're using kind of the best available information. Karen, did I miss anything on that? No, it's good.
Commissioners, questions, comments, suggestions? Would you like to go with the department's revision or another suggested change? If no one has a thought, I'm gonna go one by one. Starting with Commissioner Kailaha, followed by Commissioner DeCos.
I don't have any major objections.
So you'd be okay with the department's revision?
Yeah.
Commissioner DeCos, then Commissioner Hipolito.
Yeah, I'm fine with department revisions.
Commissioner Hipolito, then Commissioner Lindsay.
I'm fine with department revision.
Okay, Commissioner Lindsay?
I'm also fine with revisions.
Okay. Okay, let us move ahead accordingly. Now, 2.1.9. There has been comments on from written testimony and oral testimony. I believe this was a Community Plan Advisory Committee addition. We've heard from landowners, Mauka the Highway, with suggested revisions to the size of this setback. We can discuss this. Commissioner Lindsay.
I think we went over this at the last meeting. But I personally feel 150-foot setback is too large. And when they come to us to be an approved project, it will be landscaped. But after that concern, I would be just maintaining that 150-foot setback. Who is that going to fall on and how will they pay for that? Because that's a large space. I believe also, we talked about how it isn't very much space if you're talking about kids walking from Laniha Koki to wherever they need to go on that, on that landscape setback with pedestrian and bike pathways. But, but my major concern would be possibly people living in the brush and not maintaining the landscape in 150 feet, which could be expensive. Watering that.
Thank you for the thoughts. Other input from other commissioners? Commissioner Kiala.
This was really helpful for me because we had this discussion last time about, oh, how does this compare to the Veterans Highway? I always get confused with people, but that setback is 40 feet. So everybody has like kind of an understanding of what 150 feet is versus 40. I just wanted to mention that.
Thank you for that reference. Commissioner DeCos, Commissioner Hipolito.
From my perspective, Chair, 150 feet is, is a large area. And I hear Commissioner Lindsay in what came up at the last meeting, which I wasn't present at that time. But from my perspective, I'm not sure where this number came from. I can see some of the reasons here. But is it really a requirement that we're asking or what the policy is asking or as a consideration? As projects come up, as things are defined more clearly, it's just a, it's a general statement from my perspective, from what I'm reading. But yet, it's a requirement, not a consideration. So that's my comment at this point.
Thank you. Commissioner DeCos.
Thank you, Chair. Personally, I'm reluctant to change many of these since this was the voice of the South Maui community. So unless I see glaring, like, this is something really wrong here, I'm reluctant to make a change personally. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. I guess one question I have about this, perhaps for the department, is that it got brought up in testimony that there are required setbacks per land use entitlement approvals that require less. So should this be put through at 150 feet? How does that interact with those approvals?
So, mahalo for the question. I don't have their approvals in front of me. So it would be difficult for me to, to opine on it. I think the important thing to keep in mind here is that the intent of the community was to have some separation between projects Mauka of the, of Pielani Highway, have some sort of separation between it and the highway. You know, I, I, we could come back to you with some information about the approvals and how those two things would interact. And that might be the way to handle this moment, if you'd like. But I want to make sure that we have all the facts before we, we talk about that, if that's all right with the commission.
Thank you, Director. Commissioners, would, I guess per the director's suggestion, would we be okay with flagging this for future?
I'm okay with flagging, Chair. Commissioner Hipolito, I'm okay with flagging this for once again, one day.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Hipolito. Everybody else okay with flagging this? Oh, Ms. Konkowicz.
So this is from the Land Use Commission. Decision and Order Docket A94706 discusses the condition that the petitioner shall provide brave frontage road parallel to Pielani Highway and other connector roads within the petition area in coordination with other developments. And so that was, it was originally a frontage road, but they were more envisioning it as like a bike path. I think that's where that number came from. That was the reference I could find.
Even so, I think that we should spend a little more time with this question so that we can come back and give you a really solid answer. I mean, if you are interested in keeping, encouraging these projects to develop with 100, because it's not, it's not just Pielani Promenade. That's the other thing to keep in mind. Or, or Kamaulu, whatever it's going to be called. So this, this will affect other things. I think the question is, does it need to be so prescriptive? And could it say instead, encourage all property Mauka or require to, as, as our attorney said, to the extent practicable by law or whatever? That language might be the solution to get to the intent without, without coming into conflict. But we can do more research if that is what the commission will want. And just keep in mind that it's more than just the one property owner that came on today.
So one question I would have is, what does this mean for people in Maui Meadows?
Great question. So that would come into, for our previously developed property, this is different because it's not an SMA. And so it would, it only applies during very strange, I mean, it wouldn't apply in that case.
Commissioners, how would you like to proceed with this item? Hearing this additional information from the director.
I'm fine with flagging it, coming back to it.
Commissioner Lindsay.
I'm okay in flagging it also and coming back to it. I remember also at the last meeting, there was a need for that because they wanted to not be able to see the houses from the road? Is that correct? I think one of my other concerns was like, maybe affordable housing projects to removing a couple of lots in order to allow for that setback. Yeah. But yes, we should flag that.
So Director, you'll come back with us, to us with more information regarding the properties Mauka the Highway, previous approvals?
And how this will fine?
Yeah, sure. Yeah, okay.
Yep, sure.
Thank you very much. Okay, 2.1.10. 1.11, the department had a suggested change from shall to must. Any comments on this? Oh, Director?
Sure. So just so you know, there, there are going to be several places along the way. This is, if you read the top of our letter, we recommend, we ordered it to go. I'm on the letter. It had to be in the letter. One second. So in the letter, we acknowledge that there are several places where there's plain language that we would like to just automatically do throughout. And this is consistent with what the council's going to do anyway. So we're just going to prep for that. It's, it doesn't fundamentally change how the language is, is implemented from our perspective. But for the perspective of council, they just, they're going to do it anyway. We thought we'd take this step first. So what we would ask from the commission is that places where it does say things like shall, that we will change them to must to match the tenants of the council. Sorry.
I have a question. How would it be proven that they considered a roundabout?
Mahalo for your question. So I think it could be proven through, so through the traffic studies that are done. You know, they'll take a look at the various options for different intersections and things. And that's, that's how it would be proven, is you'd see that in the, in their work.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that there's a push aroundabouts. Is everybody okay with the change to must from shall? You can just show a thumbs up. Okay. Sounds good. Shall becomes must for 1.11. 2.1.12, we've had quite a bit of testimony on. Director, would you like to?
Thank you, Chair. This is not something that the department is going to die on its sword about. If it's something that the, the community feels strongly about, we could not see a scenario under which there would be programs for these things that would be effectuated by adoption of, you know, a passing of a project. So I, it just, it really is a cleanup thing for us. But if it's something that, that folks feel very strongly about, I, I don't think any of us have strong feelings about it.
Commissioners? Any strong feelings one way or another? There's testimony regarding changing it to facilities or programs or just have facilities that support? Or keep it the way it is? It's getting a little bit in the weeds, but we've had a lot of testimony on this.
Director? Yeah, I would recommend not changing it to or. Because facilities are something that we can do within a development approval. But programs are more tricky. So I would just say, either get rid of programs or leave it exactly the way it is. And program.
Chair, Commissioner Hipolito, from my perspective and what I read here in 2.1.12, I would stand to leave programs in at this point, as written.
Okay, so you would, and you would say and programs, not or programs?
No, and programs.
Okay. Thumbs up from Commissioner DeCos. Thumbs up, Commissioner Kiala. Commissioner Lindsay. Yeah, that's fine. Okay, we will keep it as is. All right, next, 2.1.13. Anybody? Commissioner Lindsay? No. Okay, 2.1.14. We have testimony on. Director?
All right, Chair. So we saw this to be similar to action 1.03 in the plan. And the intent of the policy is to have the North-South Collector Road completed along with this multi-use path. And no one, I think, disputes that we want that done. We just think it has more effect as a, an action. If it's left as a policy, it's, it's there. And that's fine. I, I think if the commission wants to dive into this more deeply, it might be helpful to have someone from Public Works come talk to you about the plan for the North-South Collector Road so you can get to the question that was brought up by the public regarding whether or not this would prevent, a policy like this would prevent a, a project. My understanding of that road is that it's pre-planned out now and it is unlikely. But I think I would want Public Works to speak to whether or not they see this as a policy that would prevent them from being, this is going to sound weird, but prevent them from being prevented from finishing the North-South Collector Road, if that makes sense.
Thank you, Director. Commissioners?
Clarification, Commissioner Hipolito here, Chair.
Yes.
For a question towards the director. Earlier, you spoke about an action item versus a policy. And an action item was referred to, and maybe we may have misunderstood with all of the technical difficulties that we have here today, that an action item will be done. Is that correct from what I heard? When it becomes an action item, it will be done? But it will be done at what time? How would that get, where does the policy require? Meaning that we got to ensure that it's done within some reasonable amount of time based on emergency egress and ingress? So could you clarify action versus policy again?
Of course. And I think, I almost want to make like a, just a little cheat sheet for all of you to have right next to you at all times. But a policy is reviewed when a project is brought forward. So a development project is brought forward, we check to see if it's consistent with the community plan. And that's when a policy would be looked at. In this case, this is an action that is being taken by the county. And so it should be an action, which is why it is an action in 1.03. There is no, so once it becomes an action, once the county knows about it, it really is up to the county to put it on its capital improvement program, on its, on its transportation improvement program, and then go about getting funding and doing it, right? The North-South Collector Road is already within our, our programming. We know we want it done. So the timing of that, again, if, if the commission wants to dive more deeply into this, we can ask Public Works to join us for the next meeting so you can talk more intensively about the North-South Collector Road. I don't have their timing committed to memory. But I, I do know that it is going in phases and it is, is certainly top of mind for them. And they also just got a RACE grant, a federal RACE grant, to do it for $25 million. So it's not, and that has a time, timeline on it. They have to use that money in that timeframe. So those are the things that I know. But if we want to dive more deeply, we can certainly ask Public Works to join us for your next conversation.
Thank you, Director. Chair, I would like to make a recommendation that we red-flag 2.1.14.
Sure. And what would you like to flag that for specifically?
As, as mentioned by Director, to have Public Works here so we could, I could, I want to more, ask more questions. I, I'm speaking on my behalf. I would like to have Public Works before me so I can engage in more detailed questions.
Sure. Are you able to arrange that for us?
Of course, happy to, happy to reach out to our friends at Public Works. Okay, thank you. Any other commissioners want to weigh in on this? Commissioner Lindsay.
As I'm kind of looking at this, the way, since you're removing, for example, you Um, as I'm kind of looking at this, the way, since you're removing, for example, you, the department was considering removing 2.1.14, and then were we going to look at it as an action in another section? Like, how was that going to kind of parallel each other?
Thank you for your question. So the next, when you get to the action items section, you'll look at, at Action 1.03. And then any of the ones that you choose to move, you'll also see those in context over there. So you'll be able to see, see all the actions that are moved as well.
Okay, I don't know how hard this will be, but if there were, if we were able to connect the two for our readability and understanding what we're doing, that would be helpful. I'm not, I'm not sure how possible that is, but yeah, if we were like, out of parentheses, connected to action item, blah, 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 or just for us to be able to understand what's happening on the document.
I think we may be able to do something. We'll figure out a way. It probably won't be in the actual document, it may be in a transmittal memo or something like that. Not all actions are connected to a policy, for good reason. Because they're two different, they're different things. But to the point where we can say, you know, you remember that on page 33, you remove this, you know, we can, we'll do our best to articulate that for you.
If it's a lot of work, then I would say no, but it would just be a lot of stuff that are for us to, you know, process.
Sure. Chair, turn over to the mic.
Oh, excuse me. It would just be easier to process not being planners.
Understood. We'll do our best. Yep, thank you for that.
Okay, so 2.1.14 is flagged for Department of Public Works to come and answer our questions. Next, 2.1.15, the department had a proposal to nix this one. Director?
So I think our explanation here is pretty self-explanatory. That, you know, these things are already exempted, many of these things are already exempted from 205A. And then it calls out the North-South Collector Road, which I actually, I, you know, and this is another question that you may want to talk with Public Works about, is where they are in their process. They may have already done parts of this. So I, I do think, I think the intent here was to speed up the North-South Collector Road. But even so, I mean, for some of the funding that's required, they may even be required to do an EA. So those are all the things that I think are a good question for, for Public Works, so you can certainly flag this and come back to it.
Commissioners, shall we flag this for Public Works also? I see thumbs up from Commissioner Kialoha. Nodding from Commissioner Hippolyto. Okay, we'll add this to the list for Public Works. 2.1.16, there is testimony on also, Director?
Certainly. So this particular item, we, we saw it, and I'm surprised at the testimony that we heard, because what we have proposed is to, to expand the reach of this policy, so that it doesn't just apply to the Leepoa Business District, which we could find no evidence of boundaries, district boundaries for it. So that, number one, is a huge red flag for us, that we want to be able to say, well, you know, when someone comes in, we can say, yeah, you're in the Leepoa Business District. But we couldn't find any evidence of that. So we propose that just to remove that, the inner and around the Leepoa Business District, so that it applies more broadly. It is a support policy, it's not a, it's one of those policies that's aspirational and did not, do not identify with what the testifiers have said on this particular subject. We believe that the change makes it more broad.
Commissioner Dicos?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I think the intent aligns with the testifiers. I think the testifier said it's still beneficial to highlight those two areas, which were the downtown Kihei and the tech park. So if there's no harm in keeping, just, just, even though the broad South Maui incorporates all of that, they seem to want emphasis on there. Is there any harm in just keeping that?
Uh, Director?
So I think the harm comes in that it's not a defined space. So we wouldn't know exactly how to apply it. You could say, I mean, you could leave it in there, but I would definitely encourage you to say through, add multi-use paths throughout South Maui, including in and around the Leepoa Business District. That might be an alternative language choice. But again, I think the department is mostly concerned that this is an undefined space, and that, that breeds confusion.
And is it the definition of the business district or the definition of downtown Kihei and the research tech park? I guess those are both fuzzy definitions.
Well, so in our statement up here, we say the Leepoa Business District could apply to both downtown Kihei and the Leepoa Business Park, but we don't actually know that that's what it means. So we were kind of supposing that's what it meant in our, in our, in our comment here. I think the important thing is fewer words is sometimes better. And in this case, if you, if you just remove these words, it still applies to whatever someone thinks that Leepoa Business District is. It, there's no need to call it out specifically in this way. And that, that's the department's position.
Thank you, Chair.
Yes, thank you, Director. Commissioner Lindsay?
I'm wondering if you could cite the drainage way that was mentioned in the testimony, instead of citing the Leepoa District, Business District and/or downtown Kihei? Because she cited a specific drainage way, and it sounded very important to the wetlands of this area, which is everything according to this document. So I'm wondering if we could go back and get that, those two names?
I'm going to guess that it's Waipuilani and Kabonahuulu. Adding, this is one where adding the extra words really isn't helpful. It's just adding, we understand that that's where you want to support them. It's also not, this isn't about exclusively the protection of wetlands. It's about integrating multi-use paths, but prioritizing the health of the wetlands.
Commissioner Lindsay?
Understood, I make sense. I agree with the department.
Okay, Commissioner Lindsay agrees with the department? Commissioners online? Okay, Commissioner Dicos also supports the department's change? Uh, Hippolyto and Kialoha?
And I guess my concern with calling out specific areas is, does that discount other wetlands in South Maui as well? I would assume if you have it applied to all of South Maui, it wouldn't apply to any and all wetlands in South Maui. Okay. I should, yes, Chair. Okay, sorry, I was nodding vigorously, but that does not go to the record, so yes, Chair.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, I think we can move on to the next policy. We had testimony regarding 2.1.17 through 28. Was that 2.2.1? The department has comments on 2.1.20. Director?
This is mostly, thank you, Chair, this is mostly a housekeeping and item. We just thought, start, start where you're intending so, for the transportation system, rather than putting it at the end related to the transportation system. It just cleans up the policy, makes it more direct.
Thank you. Thumbs up from Commissioner Dicos. Thumbs up from Kialoha. Thumbs up from Commissioner Hippolyto. Thumbs up from Commissioner Lindsay. Okay, appreciate that read from the department. There's been testimony about the use of "require". Is everybody okay with keeping "require"? Commissioner Lindsay?
Um, on 2.1.22, I think we've had a lot of projects on this side come before us where there is lots of testimony around widening PE90 highways for lanes, and this is addressing it here. Talking to the mic, sorry, sorry. I think this needs to be at least discussed right now here. I'm not sure, my notes, it is, it deters housing opportunities, who's paying for it? Are those the costs, what does the infrastructure cost? What, what kind of building does it encourage or discourage? Like I said in previous meetings, there wouldn't be traffic there if there weren't already people there. So where, where do they pay into this whole thing? This is a loaded little here.
Do you have feelings either way? This is something to discuss in.
Well, I, I just, my personal feeling is it, I'm, it needs to happen. How is, how will it happen in a fair manner?
This is one of those policies that is actually from the existing community plan, and it's been included in development plans farther south. And it's included by fair share, pro rata. I don't know if it's the correct term, because we'll call it right now.
Thank you for that. Discussion, Commissioners? Commissioner Hippolyto, followed by Commissioner Dicos, and then Commissioner Kialoha.
Chair, I'm not sure how to phrase my, my questions. I, I support Commissioner Lindsay. You know, it's like, it's like I don't have enough, I see two groups there. That's determined by Department of Trans and Department of Public Works. Sometimes I don't think that two departments agree, but yet we're making a policy that they don't determine about widening that four-lane highway, which we came across many of our projects before. I'll bypass for now, I'm still pondering in my mind about this policy.
Thank you. Commissioner Dicos?
Yeah, personally, I would, I would love to see the policies around mass transit and make, you know, multimodal use become so, improve the area so much you wouldn't need a four-lane highway, which I think is, would be appreciated by the community as well. But I'm not sure that's likely to happen, so I will, I don't have a comment for the change here.
Thank you. Commissioner Kialoha?
Yeah, I'm still working through this one in my head, because I, like, understand the frustration with not having enough infrastructure before you build, build. But I don't know how we implement it. I'm confused on how this is implemented, so... I'm like, in the middle of this still.
Sure, thank you, thank you for that. I have in my notes that three to four projects already have this as a condition, which would lend itself to keeping 2.1.22 as written with "require". Okay, thumbs up from Commissioner Kialoha. Commissioner Dicos, thumbs up? Okay, we can move on, I think, to the next one. Anybody? 2.1.23, I have a note from the Director that developers already envisioned this bypass project already and have ready ways down in, well, future plans.
Hold up your question. Yeah, so in, in working with, in talking to those folks developing the Kihei-Malka project, it appears that their intention is to connect with the bypass. And so unless you've heard from them through this process, being uncomfortable with this policy, I don't think. They did even testify on it during CPAC in a negative way, but Karen could maybe address that, I'm not sure.
I don't remember specific testimony about it. It is in the drawings that we received as part of the presentations.
Okay, I guess that's the end of 2.1. Are we good with moving on to 2.2? Yes, okay, beautiful. Well, the first one the department has flagged is 2.2.6 as a possible action.
I'll, Chair, so this is an encouraged policy, just as a reminder. So, but also the term "major parks and public spaces" doesn't seem to have a good definition. So we just felt like it wasn't a necessary word. And I think, you know, encouraging parks, there are public restrooms in parks and public spaces is just as good, if not better, than saying "major parks and public spaces". That is why the department made this recommendation.
Okay, I see thumbs up from Commissioner Kialoha and Commissioner Hippolyto. Commissioner Lindsay? I have a question, if this could be a possible action for certain parks?
I'll hold up your question, and that is a complete identification. We internally even talked about this, whether or not it was more appropriate as an action. I think it's okay, it's okay as a policy as well, because public, parks and public spaces can be developed by private entities, and so that's one thing. I think, is there an action, Karen? Yes, there's an action associated with this already. Do you remember what number it is off the top of your head?
Not off the top of my head.
We can find that answer for you, but yeah, I think that was, we thought keeping this for that purpose was okay, in that there is an action associated with it already.
Within this document?
Correct.
Okay. Commissioner Dicos?
Just wondering if there, if there's any a resistance to taking out the explorer. I mean, it's already encouraged, kind of soft language to encourage, and almost softens it even more with just exploring. I don't know if that was necessary. Can I still be encouraging dry toilet technology?
It's kind of doing two separate things. For one, you're encouraging the toilets, and for two, you are exploring the composting toilets as an option.
I think if I hear Commissioner Dicos correctly, he wants to elevate the consideration of composting toilets with this policy. Is that correct, Commissioner Dicos?
Yeah, yeah, I just, I just don't see the necessary, Explorer just means, to me, it's like, you know, do a couple online searches, and it's good. That's what I get out of it, but you're already encouraged, but I am not gonna, I'm not gonna.
That is also in the action, just so you know.
It is an action.
Composting toilets is within the action. Staff is looking up the action.
Exactly. 2.26, no, that is not the correct one, that is.
In the meantime, Commissioner Lindsay?
I would support the removal of Explorer also.
Chair, Director, if we remove Explorer, we have to say, implement composting toilets or utilize composting toilets?
Could it be encourage the provision of public restrooms in parks and public spaces, including composting toilets?
That sentence is difficult for my brain to wrap around, hold on. And include?
Or encourage the provision of public restrooms in parks and public spaces with composting toilets.
How about encourage the provision of public restrooms with composting toilets in parks and public spaces? Perfect, I think that's better.
Commissioner Dicos, does that work for you? Okay, thumbs up from Commissioner Dicos, thumbs up from Commissioner Hipolito, thumbs up from Commissioner Lindsay, thumbs up from Commissioner Kialoha. Okay, staff, did you get that change?
Nope.
Okay. I will read it again, because it's in my brain. Encourage the provision of public restrooms with composting toilets in parks and public spaces. So after public restrooms, just carrot and composting toilets and delete the rest.
Um, so.
Commissioner Kialoha, followed by Commissioner Dicos?
I'm concerned that that would only encourage public restrooms with composting toilets? Is that what I'm reading? Encourage public restrooms, including with composting toilets in parks and public spaces. Can we do that?
Director? So as the policy is written, it's fine. I just wanna, I wanna point that out, like, it gets, so, I understand Commissioner Dicos' concern, that it's like encourage and then explore. I don't know that we have to spend too much time wordsmithing something that's, we're gonna get to the intent, especially considering it's an encourage, it's not something that's gonna be rigid.
Commissioner Dicos?
Yeah, and I'll retract, I can see how it's two separate things, so I can, we can keep the Explorer in there, and you can, maybe we change that to dry, that may be more complicated, but I know composting toilet makes people very nervous, so you could change it to dry toilet technology, or does that make things even more complicated? But I'm fine with the Explorer.
Director?
I would, I welcome Commissioner Dicos' understanding of this topic, I think that it could be helpful to change to something that is, that allows more flexibility or a broader range of toilet types to be considered. And if dry, whatever, I'm sorry, Commissioner, because I don't have a committed memory, dry toilet technology?
Sure.
Okay.
And just to know where this is coming from, right? We talk about water, talk about the concerns of wastewater and impacts to and from injection, all of that stuff ties into black water, and when you switch from a wet toilet to a dry toilet, you completely eliminate black water. So that's why this is so important, and I know there's a stigma around it, we ever got over the stigma by actually implementing some of these, everyone would be saying, why didn't we, why aren't we implementing this 20 years ago to solve a lot of our wastewater concerns? So that's where this stems from, but I'm fine with Explorer, and, and dry toilet technology is a little less offensive to people, I'm that.
Okay, so are we replacing composting toilets with dry toilet technology? Is that the best description, Commissioner Dicos?
Yeah, I think that it, it maybe more emphasizes the point of no water, of limiting water use, and it maybe takes some of the stigma out of the term. If commissioners are okay with that, and the department?
Uh, Director, the department's comfortable with that language. Staff catch that?
I hope so.
Okay, and we're sort of back to the original language, yeah, okay, got it, Austin. But we did take out major parks, so that it's more inclusive of all parks.
Do you want me just to read what it would say?
Yes, please, just to make sure.
Encourage the provision of public restrooms in parks and public spaces and explore implementing dry toilet technology.
Cool, okay, we got thumbs up. Thank you. Looking at 2.2.5, would there be any space for making this an action regarding, it says, support the creation of public campgrounds within the region?
Uh-huh, Chair, I believe we discussed this one as well internally, and if I'm not mistaken, there is an action associated with this subject already. We will. Staff, is that accurate?
This is the parks for the?
Campgrounds.
Campgrounds, yes, there is an action for that already.
That was just there.
We'll find the action in the paper. Okay, staff looking for that for us? Just moving down the line, I have in my notes from 2.9 and 2.10 adding in halau space. Commissioner Lindsay?
I also have that, I also have that there are actions or something.
Possible move to action?
Yeah, halau space, like the cultural center in Wailemu, so I didn't want to, but I also acknowledge that people are very enthusiastic about Pickleball.
So, staff, did you confirm on the earlier?
The?
Campgrounds one?
Yes, 2.07, explore the feasibility of providing overnight campsites with restroom facilities within the region, such as the county-owned land by the police station is one possibility.
All right, so that's one, I do believe, we also talked about 2.2.9 and 2.2.10 regarding adding halau space, if you recall, are there action items associated with those as well? Thank you, staff, you guys are doing great. Even if they don't include halau space, but really the first one was support the development of a public performance and gathering space in South Maui. To give a little background to the commission, when we were, while staff was looking for this, when we were reviewing this, several of us pulled in our comments, and the vast majority of my comments were, this is an action, move to action items, and staff very helpfully pointed out multiple places where there was already an action available, so in some cases we said, delete this, because it's unnecessary, in some cases, and 2.2.9 is an example of that, also 10, there, it doesn't hurt to have it as a policy, you might as well leave it in there in case a project comes through that has this in it, and it can be supported. So that's one of the reasons for that. Staff, did we find something on public performance and gathering space, any actions?
I'm not finding it, I'm looking up. Yeah, so it's, I'm finding it.
Can you use the mics?
It's in the policies, it's not an action. It's in the policies, it's not an action. It's, what I'm finding is 2.2.9, support the development of a public performance and gathering space in South Maui, like, those words, performance, gathering space, that's the only place it's coming up in the document.
Okay, so the commission would like, we could propose a policy, that would, then we would have to figure out who it is that would be responsible for developing that space, maintaining that space. Commissioner Lindsay?
I think that's fine, I just, I don't know why I noted it as action. It's a pickaxe.
No, I have in my notes, Director, possible move to action. Well, it sounds like it's my fault. I apologize. I think it's okay, I think it's okay where it's at, because it's likely going to be developed by, in conjunction with something else, potentially, so I think, I think it's okay. Okay, any other comments from the commission? We can move on. 2.2.12. Commissioner Lindsay?
I also have this one as an action, and I have notes. Prioritize it.
Chair?
Director, I believe that we went through this one, that we went through some segments, I'm gonna turn to staff and see if they can look at their notes from what we had two and a half months ago, when we were looking at this, if there were amendments that were made to these sections already.
I'll have to go online, so I have to go.
Perhaps we can return to these items and maybe turn our attention to 2.2.15, which we know that you have not moved on already, and we can return back to those ones. So it appears that we stopped at 2.2.13 on May 28. So we'll find the changes that were made to that, and we can return to those, just so you, so you know.
Thank you, just a time check, I believe we have quorum until seven, which is in 18 minutes, so we have come to where we were on 5/28 now. Good job, team, but we are very thorough, which is good, which we should be doing. So now, break through that threshold and look at 2.2.15, which the department had comments on.
Uh-huh, Chair, so, we like to reduce potential for conflict in, in these items, so it says here, as identified in action 2.2, I'm so sorry, in action 2.22. The South Maui Tree Canopy Plan is an action item, it's not complete, so it's more accurate and probably better for us to say that we would require redevelopment to participate in this, to, to abide by this after this item is completed, so until then, it's just, it's a cleanup piece for the department, Chair.
Thank you, Director. Commissioners, are we okay with the department's proposed change? I see thumbs up from Commissioner Dicos, Commissioner Hipolito, Commissioner Lindsay, Commissioner Kialoha. Okay, department's change on 2.2.15, now 2.2.16 is another one flagged by the department. Director?
So our changes here, from public paths to greenwind paths, means, mostly, the word public is the, is the part here, so that, this would allow this policy to apply more broadly to generally greenways and paths, not those, not just those that are public, and then you can see a shall, must shift there. The last item, one second. Oh, for the last item, we're recommending that it become a new action, sorry, I just had to scroll up on my screen, we're asking that it become an action, that as, we've, we've got some language here, as opportunities arise, acquire parcels within cul-de-sacs for the incremental expansion of connectivity, so this is better as an action, because it says acquire, which is an action verb item, so we decided to, to recommend that this be shifted to a new action in the plan.
Thank you, Director. Commissioners?
Okay.
Okay, thumbs up from Commissioner Hipolito, Commissioner Dicos, Commissioner Kialoha, Commissioner Lindsay, do you have comments? Thumbs up from Commissioner Lindsay, okay, we will proceed with the department's recommended changes across the board on 2.2.16. Now, 2.2.17 had a series of comments from various parties, including the department. Director?
So the intent of this policy, as I say here, as we say in our letter, is to encourage more pedestrian-oriented and complete communities, and requiring everyone to do this is maybe difficult for smaller developments to achieve, and so we, that's the reason why we proposed the word support in the initial document, the draft document that went to CPAC, that got shifted, and we also, you know. We're trying to, with this document, be able to imagine all of the possibilities that are going to come forward, and then, and we want, you know, there's no planner in this room who doesn't, like, who doesn't want every one of these things everywhere, but, you know, this is, this is a place where the language being a little more loose is still okay, because we're still gonna be reviewing it against us and say, you know, does this, is this, you know, supporting the development of pedestrian-oriented complete communities that meet residents' needs for daily living? Providing a mixed-in land use, housing closings to job, this is like a manifesto for all planners, this is, this is what we all strive for, softening the language here doesn't, yeah, requiring says one thing, but supporting is, is good here, and it's, and it's okay, and it envisions a scenario where you've got a smaller project that couldn't do all of these things, and I defer, if there's anything I missed, to my staff.
Seeing no comments from staff. Commissioners? Commissioner Lindsay?
I support what the department says, hopefully, the public who testified understands that afterward, listening to what you just said, thank you. Speak long, so that's in the record. I support what you just said, hopefully, because there was a few testimonies with that specifically saying, make sure you require 2.2.17, but after hearing the response from you, Director, I think that is good for me, thank you.
Commissioner Dicos? Go ahead.
Yeah, this one I might have concerns with, and I, I do believe that the And I do believe that the department, you know, like they say, they subscribe to all of this. They want to see all of this. But I just... From the projects we've seen in the past year, I just don't see those projects subscribing to this. I think there's a... And if there isn't a bigger push, I don't see how this gets elevated to see more of this happening. But maybe... So I understand the flexibility. It is... It's a lot to incorporate, think about. But I certainly can understand why the South Maui community is adamant about this section because there's very little walkability and some of those requirements down there. So I don't know. I'm struggling with changing... Removing the required on this one.
Thank you, Commissioner DeCoste.
Chair.
Yes.
My comment here is, you know, listening to a lot of the testimony, testifiers, talking about strong words versus arbitrary or kind of loose words. I feel that this one here, too, that require is for new development, that we need to incorporate versus support. When I look at the department, it's sort of support the development. You know, whereas for me, I think requiring, the way it's written, is more specific and more holding developers accountable to ensure that these pedestrians and comprise of complete communities that meet residents' needs for daily living, providing mixed land uses, houses close to jobs. And I think if you look at the past, some of our communities was developed around that. You know, schools, smaller to grocery stores. So I don't think this is new technology. I think it's something that we just got away from. So from my perspective, I support 2.1.2.1.7 as written.
Thank you, Commissioner Hipolito. Commissioner Kailaha, you want to weigh in?
Yeah, I with... I look at 2.2.1.8, 2.1.9, and 2.1.7. Sorry, 2.1.7, 1.8, and 1.9, kind of like together. And... I just... I go back and forth, and maybe I'm just getting it too much into the weeds because I support all of this. But so indeed, I would just say I would support 2.2.1.9 requiring workforce housing units to be spread out equitably. Like, I think that's a good idea. But then, does that mean... What about, like, Makana? There's no schools in Makana. So does that now say new developments? You know what I mean? Like, oh, but then there's no... Yeah. I guess I'm... Do you see what I'm saying? Then I might... Is that contradictory to 2.2.1.7, which says required new developments must be near schools?
Yeah, thank you for that. I'm wondering if we could do a change that says, you know, something in the middle that says, "Require that new developments, to the extent practicable, be..."
I think that's a good middle ground there because it could need... The concern of the department is that a smaller-scale project is not going to be able to be a complete community. That meets all of the residents' needs, right? So that's... So to the extent practicable might be the solution. So require that new development, to the extent practicable, be pedestrian-oriented. And I would recommend composed rather than comprised of... Let's see, because of English.
I'm good with your revision.
Thank you, Commissioner Hipolito. I see nodding from Commissioner Kailaha. Thumbs up from Commissioner Lindsay. Thumbs up from Commissioner DeCoste. Okay, Staff got that? I see nodding. Okay, good. Thank you. I guess 2.1... 2.1.8. Department has "or" versus "and."
Mahalo, Chair. I believe this is actually... May have come from a letter that we got from Department of Housing and Human Concerns prior to it split from into two different things, if I'm not mistaken. So, you know, their concern is similar to the one that was above, right? That every project needs to be near job center, schools, transit, and services is a lot. "Or" is... Gives some flexibility so that these projects... And again, this is another place where every planner in this room recognizes that it is smart and wise to put affordable housing and workforce housing, frankly, all housing, close to services so people don't have to drive. They can walk, they can pedal, they can roll to their various destinations rather than having to get into a vehicle for everything. So this is just recognizing the reality that it's difficult to meet all of these things. So instead of "and," putting "or" is the recommendation.
Thank you, Director. Commissioners? Commissioner DeCoste?
Yeah, I... Again, I... I'm not a planner, but I think a lot of this is other communities on the mainland. You know, they're way ahead of us in terms of these are mandatory requirements. And we're sort of playing catch-up here. So it's nice to sort of force the bar and actually have our builders, our architects, actually, from the get-go, plan this stuff into their... Into their projects and not be an afterthought when it comes for a permit or... So I understand it's just one word. I definitely like to encourage that they try to hit as many of those marks as possible, that it's a holistic approach to the design of the project. So I do think that change dramatically reduces the bar. I'm not a planner, so I'm open to being educated, too.
Director. I think it's worth noting at this moment that most of the communities that we admire are... Were developed prior to the advent of the vehicle. And some of the most walkable, desirable communities did that without zoning, without codes. And I've always been very pro-zoning, but as I get older, I look at it and I see the flaws. I see the flaws in the way that we do our work and how we've created the situation, the suburban situation that we have. That's it. It is possible to, in this scenario as well, to say, "To be near job center, schools, transit, and services, to the extent possible." And we keep all of those things on people's minds. I think the force and effects is exactly the same as changing it to "or." But that might be the way to deal with this issue if the commissioner is uncomfortable.
Okay, Commissioner DeCoste, I accept proposed language. Commissioner Hipolito, go ahead.
Chair, instead of taking out "and" and "or," what if you just put in a comma there? Transit, comma, services, and include pedestrian. How would that language fit, Director?
Director, I think... Thank you for the suggestion. I do think it makes it more of a problem because what we're saying here is job center, schools, transit, or services, or and services, and include these pedestrian-oriented elements. So if we change it to "or," then it can be saying, "Near a job center and services, maybe not next to a school or transit, and that it include pedestrian-oriented design elements that create walkable communities." So I think it might make it more difficult to implement.
Okay. I hear you, Director. In this case, again, like Commissioner DeCoste, I see the word "and" as something more confirming versus "or." So, yeah, I would like to be educated a little bit more, too.
Thank you, Commissioner Hipolito, Director. So if I may, it is 6:59. And we could come back with a little bit more on this particular item as well, understanding that the commission wants a little more background on it. I also think there's some things to say about how, you know, 201H processes can exempt, be exempt from the community plan. So we are working on this policy that may just not be implemented anyway. So we can come back with more thoughts and help the commission. And I think it's also a good idea, maybe perhaps as part of our training, to talk about the origins of planning when we do commissioner training, when you have new commissioners, to talk a little bit about, you know, the basic building blocks of the planning world and why we think about things that we do because it might help support you guys as you do your work.
Okay, so we will flag these policies for next time, noting that this is where we left off. And I do want to note that we do have a letter of testimony from the former Department of Housing and Human Concerns regarding this 2.1.8, 2.1.9 policies. And they're coming from the standpoint of how this intersects with the residential workforce housing policy. So noting that for the record, it is now 7 o'clock. I believe we are about to lose quorum, and this was our scheduled time for our meeting. So I believe everything is duly noted. We know where we will come back next time. And we will see everybody on Tuesday, August 27. And thank you, everybody, for bearing with us through all the technical challenges we've had tonight. Appreciate your patience and perseverance. Have a good evening, and we will see you next time.
Love, everybody.